I'd like to thank you, everybody, for coming to the City of Darlington, the City Council Meeting tonight, the date of July the first, two thousand twenty-five. I'd like to take a second before we pray and just have a moment of silence for the two officers, the one who was shot and the one that we lost in Darlington County today, early this morning. And just take a moment and say, "We're prayer, we can just be quiet this long." Thank you. Thank you. Just remember the Mason family, the Heatherly family today, and all the officers from the Sheriff's Department as they go through what they have to suffer with. And appreciate everybody's service. All right, Phil, I'll take a moment, try to hit for a word of prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, thank you for every blessing you've done for us and given us, thank you for seeing your son, Jesus, to die for us, the Lord, save us for our sins. As far as should be a good testimony for you, the Lord, and all we do is work together, the Lord, it'll be a shining testimony for you throughout the city of Darlington, everywhere we go throughout the world. And all these things, we ask you, pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
You are standing. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Do I approve the regular City Council meeting, June the third, two thousand twenty-five? Our motions are heard.
I'll say it again.
Thank you. Ms. Reed, I have motion, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the special meeting, City Council Workshop, June the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five?
Make a motion that we approve the special meeting, the City Council Workshop, February, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll say it. I have a motion to amend the agenda for tonight, to add on item four, below recognition of reports under USDA, to add on Mrs. Howler's, she didn't come to speak for the forestry commission. Motion to approve the amendment. I'll say it. Mr. President, thank you. My motion is clear. I very good. We start USDA Natural Resources. So we have Shabika McCoy. How are you doing?
Hi, I'm Claire, City Council member. I'm Shabika McCoy. So I am a retired military air force and now farmer. So I partner with NCL JASCO and NRCS to go around North Carolina and South Carolina and kind of bring on one of the many programs that the USDA offers. And currently, I'll just keep my fingers crossed, but right now, this program is funded. So I try to reach out to limited resources type towns in that nature. You do have some slides in front of you guys. I've been seeing some of those, but I forgot one. But this emergency watershed protection program does not have to be declared by the state, by the governor in order to be eligible. So in the event of a natural disaster that happens within sixty days, you guys would submit a formal request to the NRCS office, which is located right down the street. And then they will send out an engineer to assess the project if it's being eligible. It is a all-share program, so depending on how your budget looks and how you guys allocate that, they could approve up to ninety percent, but typically it's seventy-five percent that they will cover, and you guys will cover twenty-five percent of the project. And you guys would be the sponsor for the project, so you guys will oversee, you know, the duration, any permits that are needed from the start to finish. There is a timeline, like I said, within sixty days from the event, from the natural disaster that you have to submit the request. But typically, it could take up to one to three years for the project from start to finish, if any other endeavor would look at it. Most of, for the most part, there are, for the short shit, it's more streamlined for erosions. It can't be anything that is military related or something that has already been fixed twice within the last two years. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had.
I'm just saying, okay.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, so I mean, certain, once, if there is something that you guys need, that you wanted to get fixed, and the engineer comes out and assesses and says eligible, they can let you know that, if it's not eligible, they'll let you know what's eligible and what's not eligible. But let's see. I did provide an example in there for you, sir, from there, that you guys, you would, you know, one that initiates, initiate the project, so you will write the letter to the NRCS conservationists, and then they will come out. Currently, the South Carolina seat is vacant, so North Carolina is the one that's holding down the board for North Carolina and South Carolina, just due to vacancies. So hopefully, we can get that position fulfilled through the NRCS. And then in there, just talks a little bit about more about what NCL JASCO does. This company, in the event that a natural disaster did happen, and you had to have something, the repairs, NCL JASCO could be an order, a company that could come out and actually perform the project or feed on the project if they were awarded the project. So it kind of talks about some of our activities that we've completed and things that we have done throughout the United States. So I kind of was prepared for a PowerPoint for, to present it very briefly, and I try to do it within three minutes, because I know you guys have some good Samaritans in here. But in regards to, for any citizens, this particular project or program is only eligible for private FEMA is what we would use in the event of a storm or flood or fire. So this is separate from, from the state of the city. I'd like to make that clear, too. Any questions for me? I was trying to be brief, I'm sorry, I was a little touched about what, you know, what happened this morning. My father is a sheriff and my godfather is a state trooper, so I'm trying to handle myself, but I do apologize for not, I really did.
And then something, so.
This is our second one today. Terrence Carroll, we all mean we're pretty well, also, it's back on the fair term.
Sorry to interrupt. Any questions?
Also, Shabika, what do you say about this, another city, where this is more for, during the natural disaster, a bridge got washed down, a road got washed down, is that what I could think?
So the roads are a little different from, it would be more of the straight bank, so they would, they would repair the bank of it, but not the actual road. Roads don't qualify or not eligible.
What about, what about trees, like, in our river system, we'll have trees.
So they could, debris, any debris, any, anything that's blocking, yes. Anything that's blocking the flow of it, they couldn't do that. Now, I feel like I'm back to myself.
Erosion has, it has to be connected to a declared disaster.
Yes, ma'am, not something that's already previously standing. Say a heavy rain comes, I don't want to give any example, but something kind of unfortunate, then yes, ma'am, within sixty days of that event, we can. Now, if there's something that has happened within sixty days, within sixty days ago, we can get on it, but it can't be something that's already outstanding.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here's a solid.
So my name is Ann Heiler. I work for the South Carolina Forestry Commission. I am not a forest fighter, I do urban forests. I take care of them with cities, we provide assistance, we provide grants, one of the things we do is assist with Tree City. So I am here to prevent Darlington's Tree City Awards. It's been recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation for achieving their twenty-seventh year as a Tree City. To be a Tree City, you have to have a public tree ordinance, which goes through city council, you have to have an official tree board, also through the city, spend more than two dollars for capital on tree issues, and celebrate Arbor Day. All of you, they had a celebration of Arbor Day, December sixth, at Public Square. That is where, and there was a proclamation, because the city of Darlington has the largest little leaf linden in the public square in the entire state of South Carolina. So they have a state champion little leaf linden tree out there. So there was a proclamation on that, free tree giveaway for your Arbor Day celebration. So twenty-seven years as an Arbor Day, and they achieved also their first year as a Tree Growth Award. This is where cities do above and beyond Tree City. They got an urban tree canopy assessment that won them all the points, and this is because they received a grant, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, from the Forestry Commission to help with their urban trees. So that is that, Darlington. So this is where we have a media photo shoot. So I would like the town administrator, how do you want this?
I'll take the picture.
Okay. Town administrator, Ms. Hopkins, Arbor Day normally offers a banner, they're getting mighty stingy. We are stuck with reflective stickers. Mayor, the other one, but we need all of city council in this. Somebody gets the breathtakingly small Tree Growth Award, plaid on that. So if we could have just a photo, I'm short, you guys are long.
We need a shift.
Yeah. Where do you want?
Over there, Brian, you fall in right there, and you stand in the middle.
Yeah, I'm there. Okay. All right. Yes, yes. Oh, my goodness. Up close.
Here we go.
Yes.
One, two, three. Get one more. Here we go. One, two, three.
All right. So just wanted to say, we will write a post for this, for the Commission, Street Country Magazine, on this, and Hunter Thomas will also write some, will collaborate on it. Ms. Hopkins, I don't want to go up the hallowed steps here, but I will contact you and we'll talk, give you some metal signs, some banners, and all that for Arbor Day and interviews.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, all right.
I'm always like, "Sir, if I feel welcome to jump." All right, citizens wishing to appear before council, Mrs. McRae.
First thing I wanted to do was just to say thank you to all of you, to all of our citizens who participated in Freedom Fest over this past weekend. It was an excellent event, we appreciate everyone coming out, all of the vendors and sponsors, thank you to the citizens for allowing us to continue to help with that project. When there are activities, it means the world when we all get out and support it. So thank you for your support to the entire city of Darlington. If you have upcoming events, and hopefully you'll get just as much participation, if not more. And I also wanted to take the opportunity as well to thank our city manager for giving us a budget that she could explain to us over this time of week. And I appreciate the time and the effort that she put into it, explaining how she came up with the numbers, you know. We were this governing body that was here, can't explain what happened last year, but the fact that she could give me information about how she came up with the numbers this year, I appreciate that. And I do want to let you know that you are appreciated, and thank you for that. And we know next year, you can tell us again why there's a difference, right, and we're thankful for what, for those efforts that she's putting in for that, and I do appreciate that. And I also wanted to do, to say, just as our hearts are heavy, and we mourn the loss of one of our very beloved, our very own officers here within the county, I want to thank all of the first responders, our city police, our county sheriff, everyone, our fire department, because the job that they do is always dangerous. They are selfless individuals who go out daily, not knowing what they will encounter. And they keep coming back, day after day, month after month, year after year. They continue to come back, to give of themselves, and thank you to their families who allow them to do that as well. But I do ask that you keep the family of Officer Mason in your prayers, as well as the family of the officer that was injured, in a special prayer. But let's make certain we are praying daily for all of our first responders and law enforcement, because they never know what they will encounter. And we want to cover them in prayer and let them know that they are appreciated, and we thank them for what they do, and know that our condolences are with those who are mourning right now. Thank you.
Catherine Hamm?
Katrina. Mayor, the high council member, her name is Katrina Hamm. When we come to these meetings, we come hoping to get some results, but I understand things are still the same. I know that it takes time, but how much time? We had meetings just to say we had a meeting. Still haven't seen or heard from anyone since the last meeting. The streets are still the same, and for the Fourth of July, our street is going to look terrible. And Broad Street, Spring Street, Castro and Orange Street, and downtown looks great. While we live in the jungle, this is the land that time forgot. Still no result, results. Can somebody invite me?
Ms. Anne, this is, you pray your comments, where it is not for discussions, of course, I vote con. Thank you, Ms. Anne.
Can we ask, can we ask what street you live on?
Jefferson. Jefferson. I will just kind of comment that I would buy it, and I said with, said with Ms. Hamm one of these days, and I always encourage her to please come and offer it. I explained that what is being, what is, what the city is doing, we sent out the letters for those that are cleaning it up, but we are limited as to how far we can go on to the private properties. And this is what is one of the main problems on Jefferson Street and Tallulah Street, is that they, the private owners are not keeping, are not keeping up. The parks that the city is doing, yes, they can do more often, because it is, it is summertime and things are growing quite rapidly. But we are trying, and I know that the city, oh, every growed-up lot on Jefferson Street, a letter was sent. We've only had one to respond. That is, and for those of you who may know, the Harrison property, the gentleman came and bought that, he came and cut that and put a fence around it, as a result of the letters that we did send out. We are trying, and this, at this point, we are just trying very hard to get the private owners to respond.
All right, I've finished business, credit card processing for the building, the Coast Department.
Citizens Council Mayor, I spoke with Ms. Sarah Cole, she is with Catalyst. Catalyst actually has the brand that we use, in-court, as one of the brands of credit card processing that is under the Catalyst brand. That being said, we already are in agreement with them, and working with them for our utility billing and for our court services for processing of payments. So after playing phone tag for about two, three weeks now, she let me know today that we can renew, we, the utility billing processing agreement that you already have, along with the in-court for our court fee, tickets, fees, processing is up for renewal anyway. It is not on the Catalyst paper, so we have an agreement with in-court, but we don't have one with Catalyst. So it is on their to-do list when those older ones expire to bring us under the Catalyst brand name. That saying, said, it would be no problem, no cost currently, at the most it could cost, the city is three hundred and fifty dollars if we, if we had to purchase the cost of a card reader. And the only other thing that we need to do is have a Wi-Fi connected device, like a desktop, okay, I was really fighting their heart, a desktop that can be connected by a USB port to the card reader. The training and setup is free. She believed that, for the most part, it would be at no cost, but if not, it would be three hundred and fifty dollars. The processing fee would be passed on like they do for the court system and for utility billing, and it could be up to five percent. She could not view our agreement, it just wasn't available to her. Her supervisor was not available to get, give her that information. The only other options would be, and she recommended that we would have a live call agent, where we, where the citizen would, or the business owner would dial the one-eight-hundred number if they didn't want to go online, come in to the, to the counter. But I didn't real, did not know, and maybe Ms. Priggin could tell me, whether there is a one-eight-hundred number.
I think the court has one, as well as one.
Okay. What about a, a link to pay? So those three options are available if the city is wanting to do that. So she is going to, will work with her administrator, director, to get the agreements together, and she's waiting on us to tell her what, what we want, whether we want at the counter, also the telephone line, as well as a link to pay, where they can just click it in and make their payments.
Is there no cost for all those different features listed?
No cost.
So definitely a link, I don't have that.
The link, right. I didn't know if that would cause any issues, financials and accounting, that's the only pushback I would probably expect. So if, and she said, no, it's no cost, and we're already partnering with them anyway, through the in-court brand.
Thank you.
So I take that, you know, we'll proceed on? All right.
I need to have it, try and get it in for a while, so they can have, they have access to it.
Thank you.
All right, now, new business, discussion of golf cart performance, Ms. Carter.
All right, so I passed out, everyone, this piece of paper right here. What we have going on is the General Assembly used to regulate golf carts, and now they send it back to the municipalities, so municipalities can regulate as they're chosen. And so what it is, I took the Ori County, or sorry, North Myrtle Beach ordinance, worked with Chief Davis and our city attorney, and that's what we have here. There's no real changes from the state ordinance as it was in the past, besides three different things. One of them is that children under the age of twelve now have to wear a seatbelt, and so they're going to be required, if you're under twelve, you have to have a seatbelt for your children. The second one is hours of operation. It will be changed from, I believe it is sunup until midnight. So as long as the golf cart is equipped with lights, headlights, and all that, they'll be able to drive. And then the chief was asking about speed limit requirements, and so we limited that down to thirty. Some of the lithium battery golf carts can get rather fast, and so he's just worried about that, carrying through the community. And the last change is roads that they're allowed to drive on. If it's a thirty-five mile an hour road or less, then they'll be allowed to access it. So that'll let some of the neighborhoods that previously kind of had to skirt the law, be able to access the community, like going around town and stuff. It's pretty simple.
Is age twelve, you're comfortable with age twelve, maybe not fourteen-year-old to fourteen-year-old having to receive it?
So the state law requires age twelve and under to wear the seatbelt, and so that's what North Myrtle Beach and everybody else adopted, so that's just what we're adopting. And I'm not sure if we can adjust, I'm sure we can actually go higher, but definitely the law is the state law. Yeah. Yeah, there.
Fifteen.
About one eighty foot, you really can't, it's gonna be eleven, ten, twelve, or whatever, you can't corner it.
Yeah.
You could say anybody that had an ID, you have to get, in the seatbelt, something that they trip out on.
I see the chief, right, that's shaking his head.
Is there anything that I left out?
Good evening, y'all. Thank you for mentioning officer that lost in county. In the, in the seatbelt thing, yes, we could raise it to, anybody under the age of fourteen is required to wear a seatbelt, but I think we may get into the same thing that Myrtle Beach, when they required motorcycle riders to wear helmets in Myrtle Beach, and later had to go back and get back all that fine money, because it's a state that you, you can't, you cannot do that. I don't think we can go to fourteen, I think we have to leave at twelve. We can reach out to somebody for a stronger opinion than mine, but I think that's where we find ourselves, just like that.
Just side by sides, and the workhorses fall under golf carts, or that's totally different?
Yes, they have to be totally different, the engine size and the speed that they'll be able to get up to.
The golf cart, does it have to be a battery-operated golf cart?
No, it can be gas, but it has to be a golf cart, yeah. It can't be any of those, what, what speed vehicles?
Speed vehicles.
They would have to go to B and D, and have like their real car, go through all those steps if they wanted to. That's the only way that I know that they can side by side of a road, but I don't think they can.
They have a long list of requirements.
Yeah.
It's just about everything you have on a, on a regular passenger vehicle, you would have on that LSP.
Thing of words, they just get too fast, and so we allow all those on the road, and then we have a six-month wrap mark.
How, how long is the safety period? How concerned you, after dark, if you're talking up to midnight, you're ten, eleven o'clock at night, have someone on a golf cart that doesn't have full lights?
I know all the golf carts.
I mean, they have some lights, but it's not, if you're making a left turn out of somewhere, it's a side, you mean, there's no, there's no lighting, you know, lights on a golf cart aren't as, aren't as visible typically as they are on a car.
And one of the words that he had with that was, a lot of the golf carts, before they actually got headlights, were put light bars, I guess they're called, hence that's his word, he wants provisional headlights, taillights, it's gonna look like a car, just any version. But right now, we have a ton of people in the community driving around nighttime in golf carts in their neighborhoods, one from one house to the other, and they're technically breaking the law. And so this is just trying to bring it in and give people the ability to go from one neighbor to the other. But the chief of words was, you know, nothing good happens after midnight, so I thought midnight was a good safe time to cut it off.
One of the things you said about where they can drive the golf, the golf course.
So the only place they can drive the golf carts are roads that are thirty-five miles an hour or less, so.
Okay, and most of those may not have a light.
Have any cities got over thirty-five?
Just a few places did, they're above thirty-five.
I was, I was just kind of responding, I'm looking at what, because normally, the street that is thirty miles, and I don't have a traffic light.
Yeah.
So I was just kind of pointing that.
Yeah, no, so they'll be, they'll stay off fifty-two and stuff like that, it's gonna be only allowed in roads that are thirty-five miles an hour less. I guess I'll make the motions, pass the golf cart ordinance, revise, and then chapter eight.
The boards and commissions, this is office, state manager's report.
Good evening to the citizens and council. Good evening. This is the first day of our fiscal year, so I felt like it's kind of shake off a little bit at the beginning of the new year, and we're hoping for great things in the 25, 26 year. I started on this some months ago, so I've had to kind of revise it a little bit. But over the past few months, there have been several exciting activities taking place in and around the city of Darlington, the Pearl. While there are many items or situations that need addressing, the Pearl is being noticed by people near and far. The Pearl will be featured on the National Cable Network, Food Network, particularly featuring our beloved Public Square. Starbucks opened in April, and yes, I attended my very first race at the track, Too Tough to Think. What time? I get used to them coming by me like, oh, okay, well, now I know what's going on. Hope to go again. I encourage each of us to think about the wonderful things that are going on, not only around, but also in the heart of the Pearl. Today, I received one positive message among many that were, may not be so positive. We received through our contact page, since February 1st, there's been a myriad of things. We won't mention the hot topic, but a myriad of items. But this citizen complimented our streets and sanitation secretary for being helpful, pleasant to talk to. It was a delight to receive. Just a few weeks ago in May, we had one of our own go to the aid of a citizen in distress. We have great women and men serving the Pearl. I salute them all. If you see a city employee doing an outstanding job, please let them know and let me know, as we want to recognize them. We're going to be working on doing more positive recognition this fiscal year. I wanted to share a few items with you. As you know, our budget passed on Thursday evening. It will be posted to the website soon. And our 24, 25 audit has already started, started last month. And then I wanted to review some updates with you. Y'all have that before you. As you know, Casser Street, one of our busier streets, has been, a lot of folks in the way. I'll just say it that way. And that part is coming to an end, and then I'll move over to North Street and finish that. There are some emergency sewer water line repairs on Britton Road, and Curver Street was repaired last week. One on Britton was repaired today, and then get to the repair last week. So all of Britton Road have been repaired. 305 Wells Street, I'm trying not to call names, the number of the house, but Wells Street, we're getting that repaired, as well as Creekside Apartment has been delayed. What we have to remember is that if there is a non-compliant issue that comes up, let's say we have a water leak, we are bound, we have to, to stay compliant to go see about that non-compliant issue and get it to where South Carolina DES would be satisfied. We have to react, we have to go to that. So that may mean we leave it here, we get it to where it's not affecting lives or property loss, and then we go take care of that issue. And we should, I'm saying should, come back to fix this. So I just wanted to share that with you, this, the council has an even more detailed report. And that brings me to the Brightly kickoff. A few meetings ago, we have a lot of meetings, we introduced the Brightly software. The staff is looking forward to this, the myriad of benefits this software will offer, so no one gets forgotten. And we follow up, and we see where we are. And when you call me and say, what's happening, I can say, Mayor, they finished it an hour ago. Or they've ordered the parts, parts will be in, and we should have that settled in the next couple of weeks. So hopefully, once we get going, we'll know and keep track of every complaint, every recognition, every thank you, and job and project that we have going on in the city as it relates to water, sewer, streets, and sanitation. And I just want to leave you with this reminder. The staff is here to help. Please reach out by telephone or, and/or email us using the contact prompt on the city's website. And I just wanted to say, good job to all the staff for 25, 26. I'll be, I'll be saying that personally. Hopefully, I'll get invited to some staff meetings, so I can do that. And, you know, just, when you see us doing well, compliment us on that. Y'all are holding up feet to the fire for the things that we might not do so well. But just remember, we have great people working for the city. And I just want y'all to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And I would like to just say thank you for giving a accurate budget. Thank you so much for showing us, presenting to us the true facts of what's going on in the city of Darlington. Thank you for doing that, so citizens themselves also would know what's going on.
All right, executive session, which can, those calling because they asked to wait till August or September to discuss it. So we don't have to do that tonight.
And could I also say, Mayor, that Mr. Ziegler, he forgot us. He did put us on his, on his, and he made it to his office cabinet. That's happened to me too, so, the 29th.
The 29th, but we can do the second brief for the golf. Reminders, this Friday is July 4th, the state, the city will be closed. I think, is the trash still the same, do you know, or try to pick up where you posted?
Yes, so, let me think, let me get through. So Thursday's trash pickup will be picked up tomorrow. Friday's trash pickup will be picked up Thursday. Friday's recycling will be picked up Monday and Tuesday of next week.
And it'll all be posted on the website?
Yes, it's already posted on social media.
Okay.
So there'll be, oh, nevermind. Make sure you know that and check your website and make sure you get the creative golf carts and stuff. All right, Tuesday, July the 29th is the next city council workshop special session at 6 o'clock on Tuesday, then Tuesday, August the 5th, is National Night Out. I think August, July the 16th is the council's, and we'll meet in, he'll be in. And thank you. Do you have questions to adjourn?
Just, I wanted to, I ask this all the time, but I want to see, just like these changes are coming, those folk who are not going on the website, do we not have another way of informing our residents about the change when this trash pickup? Because I promise you, that's going to be a problem. It's just like it was our last holiday, that that is. And we need to be thinking of that. We need to figure out a way to do this.
One of the things I think we did, we pre-deal, but it was put in the utility bill that was mailed to every household.
It also was a bill?
Yes.
You said you have?
It was in the utility bill this month.
I haven't got mine.
We haven't gotten the bill yet, so it's not showing up yet.
And see, and you're picking up, on my area, you're picking up trash that's normally picked up on Thursday, tomorrow.
We all, may I interject? I was trying to remember all the things we want to put in place, but one of the things is to text my government. So we are going to have ability to send out messages. There's also an opportunity to use our utility billing data to send a message to your home or to your phone. So we're going to start trying to put those in place and also try to reach other avenues to communicate. So we, I have, Mr. Thomas and I have discussed that. And so we're going to try to do, to widen how we communicate in the various ways, so that we can get to everyone.
Everybody gets the utility bill to, just like we know July 4th is coming. So the next time that we know something's coming up, whether it's later day or what, you can go ahead and schedule with the, whatever department that they can, a month advance or something. Besides the, the digital sign, and then as soon as you get the text, the text will be a matrix, somebody get in.
I'll message to adjourn.
Give it a second.
Zach, go.
Take on a bit. Questions here? Thank you, y'all.
Does anybody want to sign?
Oh, it goes down, not the home.
I'm glad you got it.